City Commission, November tenth, meeting. The roll call, please.
Gunther.
Here.
James.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Rhodes.
Here.
Simmons.
Here.
Could we all rise for the question?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its stance one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We received the minutes from Karen of the October twenty meeting, so motion for approval of the minutes.
So moved. Second.
And questions, additions, comments on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Both the same. Motion carries. The number six administration of the oath of office took a turn because the state has changed the laws on timing of oath of office and when you take your position. Now, anybody elected in November does not take their position until December first. We used to take ours right away, the next meeting. Our city charter still says that, but then you have to decide if you're gonna follow the state law or the charter. Brad, which one do you take?
State law comes before the charter, so the state law overrides the charter provision.
So because of that, we have one vote outstanding, did it come in today?
No, it did not.
There was one vote outstanding, was it, is it military that we have to wait for?
Yes.
You have to wait six days post-election for all military ballots to come in. One never made it, but it didn't make it in the six days. So hopefully this week, the group at the county, or the canvassers.
They were certified today, they've certified today.
Oh, they had their vote today?
They had to wait till today and then.
And so they did have their vote?
Well, she did not tell me that yet, but they had to wait for today, so they'll be doing it tomorrow.
So hopefully we'll all three be certified. No congratulations yet, you have to be certified. So anyway, that's why next time, next meeting a week from today, we hope to have the oath of office. Then you still don't take that new position until December first, but we're already the ones that are in the position, so it's kind of a moot point, but that's the way it is. And Karen had that figured out last Friday after, Thursday afternoon, but that's why we're not doing that today. There are no special orders, no informational updates, no study session, public comment, not related items on the agenda. Hearing none, we'll keep moving. Kathy Crew, our now, our reporter from the Pioneer, is I think working on a major economic story. And she has asked the mayor a lot of really hard questions. And I'm trying to really think it through because they're very meaningful. Mark looked at him for me and he said, good, I hope you enjoy. So Kathy, thank you for caring about our county so darn much, and you do great work. And I had to tell her I'm working on it, 'cause I don't wanna just do a over-the-phone one on this one, so thank you, Kathy. Also, we have official announcement to make. Commissioner Amanda Johnson completed the Women's Elected Leadership Intensive through the MML, and she'll be receiving a plaque for that, but not till March, June, and March. So congratulations Amanda for that.
I appreciate that.
You bet. I guess we'll start right into general, oh, we gotta introduce our new treasures here today. Selected, oh boy, a couple months ago, I think it was. Mark, you wanna do the intros?
Happy to, and I think we're gonna have something formal on our next agenda.
Oh, sorry.
In case.
Is this okay to do it now?
Yeah, sure, and we can do it both times, maybe if that's okay with you, Mayor. Welcome, Michelle, she's been here all day, this is her first day, and hit the ground running, has a smile on her face still, so.
Scare her off.
Still here? We'll all be pleased to know, for all of you who don't live in the city, she bought a home in the city of Big Rapids.
Thank you.
City limits. We're always happy for that.
I'm glad you found something that met your requirement so quickly.
You bet, that's good news, so welcome. Jake Rennie's here today too, aren't you Jake, visiting? General business, there is one mayoral appointment to approve. The zoning board of appeals desperately needed a member. Because they're having an appeal, right? Mark, isn't that the case? So you need to get that up. And Jeffrey Gaylor has been interested in being on a commission for a few months.
Couple of months, it sounded like, yeah, he was a stay-at-home dad, and his kids are older, and is just looking for what he could give back and be involved in the community.
And he accepted the offer to join the zoning board of appeals, he met all the criteria. So Michelle brought that to me through Karen to appoint him, and I would accept the motion for on the resolution appointing Jeffrey Gaylor to the zoning board of appeals.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? I think we'll just do a voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both the same, motion carries. Next starts our, oh, this is our real estate question. Is our, are two years up with Joe McNally with RE/MAX together? Mark wants to renew that contract for two more years, is that correct, Mark?
That's correct.
Any questions about that?
Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved. Second.
Questions?
Okay, catch the second, you both said that at the same time.
I just wanna make sure when we discuss our strategic plan, that we're specifically talking about real estate, how we handle it, the properties that we have right now, I think we only have two?
Two that are actively listed.
Two that are actively listed. Because we just, we need to take a different approach to this. And I don't know what that means, so if we could all talk about it together during the strategic plan, but we need to somehow come up with a different way to handle this. That hatchet property, I'd really like to make that happen for a developer.
Duly noted, we'll make sure.
You put that in your list, Michelle, Michelle's the one who does strategic planning.
Right, right. And our current, our free parking lot that we're trying to sell.
Is there a motion to accept McNally Enterprises as our realtor?
We do have that already, Mayor.
We do have the motion.
Motion in the second.
All in favor, say aye.
I think we should do a roll call.
And why? There's no money. I don't know, I'm just asking.
She's just in charge, Mayor.
I'm gonna ask.
You can do it either way, it's not required that you do this by roll call, so.
All in favor, say aye.
Nobody's in favor?
Okay, call the roll.
Are you sure?
Nobody would vote?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Yes.
Gunther?
Next, we would like to reduce the listing price for the land behind the old post office. And you can see what those numbers are, is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, questions?
What was the main reason behind it, just not moving?
Not moving, no interest, not, not zero interest, but not any interest at that level, so.
I mean, it's a property we really didn't know that we owned, so.
Karen?
Johnson?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Yes.
Now starts the MDOT, I memorized all the whole contract, so. A resolution for the resurfacing and culvert redesign on Woodward Avenue, the whole city will be excited to hear that. Mark, anything else?
Yes, Mayor, no, you nailed what the project is, a small urban program, as we refer to it as a, I would guess I'll characterize it as a shared venture. It's a partnership of the road commission and then the cities with both our transit and our road system. It's, urban areas, we're considered a small urban area, part of this program. Get a certain amount of funding that can be allocated in different ways. And we share it, some years it goes to the county road commission, some years the city gets it, and it's been on a back-and-forth basis. This project is very much needed, as everybody knows, who drives Woodward leaves town. And it's a section of road that needs replaced, and we've been delaying it to take advantage of this funding and replace the culvert that's there. And that is scheduled to happen next summer.
When are you planning to go up to bid for it?
That's where I'll, I'll ask Todd, if that's okay, Mayor?
Sure, please, Todd.
The project's already designed and out for bids right now.
Okay.
Bids through the MDOT letting process, so I thought it would make the November letting, which was last week, but it got pushed to the December letting, so I think it's December fifth, if I remember right.
I just, it's great that it's out to bid.
It's out and advertised.
Todd, does, please do a lot of these with the small urban program like that.
Yeah, it's a pretty, it's a nice program because you're in the small urban area, you don't have to necessarily fight with other communities. It's allocated around between all of the small urbans around the state. So every other year, you're eligible for funding under that program, or your, your urban area, which Mark said, the transit county and the city.
Good. The other thing I think I'm gonna mention is that both residents who had to give us easements to put that culvert in were very cooperative and friendly and responded quickly, so made it sooner for Todd to get those bids out. And I, you could name them, Mark, if, shall we not?
Mark Bloxum and his partnership with Bob Tetslof and, oh, Alex Macario owned the property on the south side of the road, and on the north side, Mayor, you have a better memory?
Oh, Frank, yeah.
Tim Frank, yes, very nice fellow, and as the mayor said, very, both were very cooperative and got us the easements we needed.
So that's very good. Any other questions, did we have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Further questions?
Rhodes?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Gunther?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
The next, thank you, the next is a, another small urban plan, this time, if you know Big Rapids well, you know that one of the last streets that's not paved is Monroe Street, far west edge of town. One side of the road is township, the other side of the road is city, and they have major, especially stormwater problems there, where sandbag is used, et cetera, so we met with the township and we met with the road commission, and it looks like, Todd, that is gonna be a goal, what, what's, give us some detail.
Interesting thing on this one, this is part of that small urban program again, for funds in twenty-seven, so we have not, we actually got to start, started on the design as a local project because it's classified as a local street. And somebody's read the fine print in the document and realized that a certain percentage of that small urban money can be applied to local streets. And so when we had that meeting with everyone, Monroe Avenue popped up as a good one that could take advantage of those funds and help facilitate that reconstruction.
I don't remember, Todd, how much money you think that might cost?
Um, I think.
Your rough estimate?
I think we were at five hundred and forty on the roadside, and then I think I put two fifty on some utilities, water, sewer type work.
And that included the sidewalk for the people, or curb and gutter, or?
Curb and gutter and sidewalk on one side. And then I believe that it just changed, I wanna say it's four hundred and twenty thousand?
Yes.
Is the grant?
Yeah.
And then you have to match, match it at.
It's still.
It's still a great deal.
Well.
It's still a great deal.
Now, it does come with the hurdles of you gotta go through the MDOT process, so there's a little bit of hoops.
So when are you looking at starting this one, Todd, twenty-seven?
It would be fiscal year twenty-seven, which starts October of twenty-six, so we would go out to bid in winter of, you know, December, January of twenty-seven, and then construct in the spring. Anything else on that one, Mark?
No, that's a, yeah, that's our, our last gravel road, very much needed, as you spoke about. We've talked to the township in terms of a potential partnership and, and helping fund that. Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't surprise us if it got to be a million-dollar project in total, there's water, sewer, storm. You know, we wanna plant some trees, we wanna put in the sidewalk, so I'm sure the cost will get up there, but this is a huge benefit to that, making that project happen.
Anything else, Todd? Not for me.
Public, anything? Do you want a motion for that Monroe Street project?
So moved.
Second.
And further questions? Hearing none, please, Karen.
Simmons?
Yes.
Gunther?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Next, is the resolution accepting the bid for purchase and installation of exterior doors at the wastewater treatment plant? Who's speaking, are you speaking?
I'm happy to start, Mayor, and our wastewater superintendent Jake Rennie, I'm sure will fill in any blanks that I leave. So there's exterior doors throughout because there's numerous buildings at the wastewater plant, and it's a hostile environment for all things in terms of corrosion, and there's doors that are rusting. These are exterior metal doors, and they need replaced, they don't seal, some don't lock, they've, I, I know they battled it for some time. Jake wrote, actually put together the bid specs and went out to bid for eight doors, I believe, eight sets of doors that are to be replaced, and we had a lot of bidders, we had five bidders, and it's a big range, I know that always, you know, makes you wonder why. This SA Mormon Group is actually door specialty company, they're the ones who do all the lock sets and things in, in this building, so that's why they're familiar to us, I think helped Jake put together the specs, and, and they're just a specialty operation, so they're very familiar with the project number one, and, and it fits right into their, their scope of work or what they do. And that's, that's our explanation for why they are half of, you know, maybe some of the other bids, but, and we're comfortable working with them because we have worked with them in the past, so. That's my explanation, I'm sorry, Commissioner?
No, does this include new hardware?
Yeah, it'd be all, it includes all the hardware on the door and just closures, handles, locks, and then it's actually placing all the wastewater plant locks also.
So you're getting a pretty good deal?
Yeah, they, they helped identify, originally we're gonna replace all the doors, but they helped identify the ones that, that recommended maybe a year ago, and they had to walk us through and said I'd replace these doors, so that's what we went ahead and decided to do.
And you've got some frames in there too that are being replaced?
Yeah, that, so the frames are corroding and swelling, so then the doors won't open. Had that issue too.
So are they keypads, or are you gonna have to have keys for all those doors?
There'll be keys on all those doors, like outbuildings. The ones that are keypad on the main building will still have those keypads, are reusing those.
Other questions from the public, anyone? How many of those eight are double doors?
Two.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there a motion for the doors at the water treatment plant?
So moved.
Second.
Like discussion, hearing none, Karen?
James?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Gunther?
Yes. You know, those metal doors that I, I went and looked at, they're all rusty, you know, if you keep after them, they don't get as rusty as fast.
Mike?
You know what I'm saying?
I do.
I mean, I don't think they've been touched for a long time.
Yeah, no, I mean, if you don't paint them every couple years, then you.
He's volunteering, I can paint them for you, Jake.
That's what I had too.
You know, thirty, ten thousand dollars, a lot of cash.
Mayor, that's a really good deal.
Yeah.
I know, but isn't that a lot of money?
No, we're getting a really good deal.
Thank you for that, did we vote?
Yes.
Yes.
We did.
Next is the power, the generator system, and who oversees it? Who's doing it right now, Cat?
Yeah.
Is Cat doing it now? And so, we only had two bids on this.
We did, Mayor, and if you'll remember, this is, if this sounds familiar, it's because it is. We had.
Same thing.
Yeah, we had this at a commission meeting, I believe in October, and we had more bidders than two at that time, and one, one of those bidders was dramatically less, I think they were in the nine thousand dollar range per year. And, and a number of the commissioners and the mayor brought it up as an oddity, and I called them, and they had been, they were the contractor of record for some big operations, including the state, and he reassured me at the time that those numbers were good, and, and the commission awarded the bid, and then the next day, he got back to me and said, no, those numbers aren't good. And so, and they had doubled, more than doubled. And so, what we thought was most appropriate, I think, you know, Brad's advice was just to go back out to bid, and just because awarding a next little bidder, it just got complicated. So we did go out to bid again, we have two bidders, Wolverine Power is a company we've worked with in the past, they've had our contract in the past, very familiar with, their numbers are more in line with what I think we expected this work to cost, and recommend awarding it to Wolverine Power. Happy to answer any questions.
The company that came in under didn't bid this time.
No.
Did we have a bid bond?
No bonding on this one, no.
No, 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 on the original bid? Did we ask for a bid bond?
I don't believe so. You have a motion for the generator maintenance contract?
So moved. Second.
Further questions? I see them every time they do it, because I have the generators in my front yard, so I know when the company comes and when they're testing and what they're doing, and it's impressive, they have to run the thing and make sure it's hitting on all cylinders. Anybody else? Other questions?
Johnson?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Gunther?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
So is there any unscheduled business anyone has that would like to speak? Anyone? Hearing none? Well, Sam, the clock starts now.
I've been living twenty minutes, so how long has it been I talked?
The Brown, the, just to give a one-liner, the Brownfield Group has been meeting diligently, it's a group of citizens of the city of Big Rapids, who are our official Brownfield Board. I think there are five or seven, five.
Five, yeah.
And they have been studying all the work, this all started because Alan Edward Holmes wants to build a subdivision on Bjarson. And they need help with the Brownfield TIF. And so, after much discussion, and the Brownfield Group started up, this is their first real project, right, Mark, I would say?
Yes.
And so it took them a learning curve, Samantha and one of her partners came up and did tutorials to that group, Amanda attended and I went, and now they've had enough meetings to know that they are happy with the Brownfield offer from Alan Edward Holmes, but we're relying on Samantha to, I can't see her lessons.
Mary is.
Mary is. To lead us, help lead us through this process, 'cause it's way Greek to most of us, and she does a great job doing that, so next meeting, we're gonna be asked to approve the Brownfield.
Is it a public hearing, or is it approval? It's our.
We have got a public hearing for next week.
Because we have to notify the taxing jurisdictions to Mayor, which has been done.
But that's all set for next Monday.
I just wasn't sure if we did the, them both at the same.
We have enough notice for the public hearing?
I did it, yes.
Ten days is the requirement for.
We haven't done. I'm sure there'll be lots of people here to, for the public hearing on the Brownfield, but. So, Mark and I put our brains together and said, I think the full commission and public needs to hear from Samantha about, really, what's a TIF, how does it work, how's this flowing, and so that come next week, we'll be asked to, to approve what the Brownfield Committee has done, and Samantha, you got your job ahead of you there.
Do I get to deduct your three minutes from my twenty? Okay, 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 okay. It's done.
She should know better, Todd.
So as Mayor mentioned, you will be reviewing your first Brownfield plan at the city commission meeting next week. The Brownfield Board has done their homework and recommended approval at city commission. Ultimately, the BRA is a recommending body to the city through a public hearing. So my goal today is to provide you like thirty thousand foot Brownfield 101, I'm gonna go pretty fast because it is very detailed, but each plan is so incredibly nuanced that every plan that you may look at throughout your time sitting on that dais is going to look a little bit differently. So I'm gonna speak in generality, speak to the value of tax increment revenue and tax increment financing, and then really open it up for questions. But I didn't edit my transitions on the slide, however, this goal, the goal of this incentive is to use this for projects that fit your community's specific needs, whether that's removing blight, creating affordable housing, supporting your planning initiatives, historic preservation, attracting new businesses, building public infrastructure, and what people primarily associate Brownfield with is environmental remediation. In two thousand and twenty-three, the legislation changed, we realized that there was a significant housing shortage across Michigan, and our legislators determined it was best to add in to the Brownfield legislation that housing development is considered Brownfield. Now, I wish we would've changed the title of the legislation at that time, because it does not mean that the site is contaminated. Just being a housing development qualifies you for this tax increment financing piece. So the value of Big Rapids having their own Brownfield redevelopment authority is really twofold. You have the ability to capture administrative dollars, and per year policies and procedures, we've left that determined on a case-by-case basis. Typically, we see that between five and ten percent of the local tax increment revenue capture, and when I say local, that includes city and county taxes. The state is a little bit of a different approval process that I'll get into. And then you also have the ability to set up a local Brownfield revolving fund program. Now typically, this is something that is done for, is captured the five years after the developer has been reimbursed, and this allows you to create your own grant and loan program to do Brownfield site assessments. The BRA also has the ability to purchase properties, so you know, I think what Commissioner said about just marketing properties for redevelopment, any municipal-owned property is qualified for Brownfield, so that's something you can look at to actively market some of the properties that you have in the city. So with the Brownfield plan that's being considered next week, we took a little bit more creative of approach to populate your local Brownfield revolving fund sooner, rather than awaiting twenty years, is we split the difference between the ten percent of the administrative capture. So five percent of the local capture will go into the admin fund, and then five percent will go into the local Brownfield revolving fund with this plan in particular, so you're able to start generating funds into your LBRF sooner rather than later. So again, I mentioned that the BRA is a recommending body to the city commission. The BRA has the ability to make and enter into contracts, for example, if there was Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, an Eagle grant or loan, the BRA could enter into that agreement, or the city could enter into that agreement. If we were looking at a project that has significant remediation that needed to happen, those can be paired together. So Eagle has a maximum grant or loan award of one million dollars. Say this project needed two million, we could have the BRA hold one and the city hold one, so we have two million dollars to be able to remediate the site. Again, the BRA can purchase mortgage conveyance, lease, land, or property, and accept grants and donations, can also invest its funds.
And they can do that without approval from the commission?
Correct.
Okay.
Unless, unless your ordinance says otherwise that any like grant dollar, grants need to come to the commission. Yeah. So what is the value of TIF? Similar to a downtown development authority, the Brownfield plan freezes the base value of a property for a period of time. So when we're looking at a Brownfield plan, we have what are eligible activities under the statute, and those are able to be reimbursed to the developer. So all of the taxing jurisdictions continue to capture at the base value. And then the increment that is generated by way of the developer increasing the property value is what is able to be reimbursed. So there's an incentive for the developer to complete the. So there's an incentive for the developer to complete the project as presented. And they are the one more often than not funding the upfront costs to complete those eligible activities. So there is no, you know, outlay of city funds to be able to re reimburse the developer for these taxes. And then after the Brownfield plan is expired, so there's a time maximum and also a reimbursement maximum. So once we reach either thirty years or once the developer has been repaid, then that. Brownfield plan ends and all of the taxing jurisdictions um, get to recognize that increase in property tax revenue. So there's a couple of different ways that a property can qualify for Brownfield. First and foremost, as being a facility. Meaning there is contamination, any blighted, city owned, historic resource um. For a property that is adjacent and contiguous to one of these other property qualifications. Uh, that also can be included in a Brownfield plan. And then of course, transit oriented, land bank owned and housing property. I will say there's been an extreme focus all throughout the state on using Brownfield for housing. Majority of my work in the past used to be on the environmental side. Out of, I counted today thirty-two active projects, there are two environmental ones that are wrapping up. The rest of them are all housing. So this is a really, really great tool to help solve, you know, our problems in the state of Michigan.
Why did they do it that way? Why did the change come in twenty-three?
The governor set a priority. They did an analysis and found out that Michigan was short a hundred and fifty-five thousand homes. And that's what spurred that. Yep. So instead of going through the process of creating a whole new piece of legislation, it's like, this is working. Let's plug it right in here. So that included, so the two state agencies that were primarily involved in. Brownfield TIF before were M E D C for non-environmental activities and then Eagle for environmental activities. The change in the legislation has now incorporated Mishda into that approval process. So a little bit into how a sausage is made. By the time a plan gets to you, it has gone through a lot of iterations and it is in its final format. So. That goes to conversations with city administration, with the development team about what is eligible, what may be included. Uh, what we believe that post-development tax about taxable value will be. Plan preparation, then it comes before the Brownfield redevelopment authority. Public hearing notice is scheduled, city commission, public hearing, resolution of approval. And then we get into the reimbursement agreement that is the legally binding, who gets paid, what, when and where. Um, so F and V helps draft that with assistance with the city attorney. And then that gets provided and that is the actual signed document that says, all right, twice a year, we will reimburse for the actual available increment. It's important to know that there's only what is available is what is able to be reimbursed to developer. So we may have a million dollars of costs that have been certified. However, there's only thirty thousand and. Capture taxes that year. So the developer will be reimbursed that thirty thousand. Now, next year, that taxable value, an increase that they created may create a hundred thousand dollars in increment. Then they would be reimbursed that hundred thousand dollars in increment until they reach the certified million dollars. So there's a significant check and balance that occurs and we go through every single contract, every single invoice, all the proof of payment. And substantiate that the costs that have been approved in the Brownfield plan are eligible under statute and are, you know. What has been included in the Brownfield plan.
Who does all that Samantha? Our treasurer or you as a consultant or?
I as a consultant would be reviewing the reimbursement requests and then working with the treasurer to make sure that when it comes down to annual reporting. That we've got everything put in the in B S and A correctly and then I can import that into the state portal appropriately. And then that also helps to project out what we believe the taxes may be. So we could be looking at a fifteen year plan. And say the construction's been delayed, but the taxable value came in higher than we we thought it was going to. So we may be projecting that this plan is approved in twelve years and not fifteen years. So we help identify kind of. Where where we're at in the capture process.
The packet that was in the Brownfield Authority's last meeting, is that what's going to come?
That is correct.
So it's that exactly?
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct. So we've got the three state agencies that are responsible for approval of their subset of eligible activities. Eagle, of course, is going to be due care activities, response activities, anything that is environmental. The M E D C is responsible for approving demolition, abatement, site prep and infrastructure. As well as private infrastructure in core communities. And then Mishda is infrastructure, site prep, demolition and renovation of existing buildings. If we're looking at a rehab housing project. And then if that project were to be, have relocation costs associated for individuals, but also gap financing. Uh, we realize that there is a significant gap in what it costs to build a home as compared to what. You can sell that home for. Same thing on the rental side. Um, rentals are a little bit easier to explain. So. We have a, with the Alan Edwin Holmes project in particular, to use that as an example. Um, I don't remember all the numbers offhand, but they're rental units. And Mishda publishes a control rent each year. So we look at what Mishda's published control rent is, compare that to what the project rent is going to be for those income restricted. Units. And the difference between that calculated over the term of the affordability period is what gets us our financing gap. And again, that is something that we will go through and certify on an annual basis. We know that those numbers are likely going to change. Uh, so we go through and there's a Mishda certification form to verify that the individuals in these properties do meet the income verification. And then we look at the rental roll as compared to the Mishda published rent and then certify that amount to be reimbursed.
Do you recall how many units they had that were going to be rental at first?
I think it's six or fifteen years. Yeah.
And then the majority of this housing is what, missing middle?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
What percent has to be in um, low income based?
There is not a set percentage in the statute. What we've been seeing kind of as best practice. Uh, with the what plans that have currently been approved or are conditionally approved at Mishda is about twenty percent. But there's no, there's no minimum and it's kind of difficult that it does, the legislation doesn't speak to that minimum. However, allows communities to set different priameter parameters based on their priorities. So city of Detroit sets some very strict parameters that the legislation is for between eighty and one hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. Detroit took that to view between twenty and eighty percent of the area median income because. Their housing needs are very different than other communities' housing needs.
So what did we do?
I was gonna ask, would you recall what we?
I think it was up to one twenty.
Because really, when you think about it, this isn't low income. This is income based housing.
Right.
And based on a lot of math that.
Yes.
That you folks know.
Yeah, I'll, I can reconfirm that, but I believe it's up to one twenty.
So these plans go on for like they wanted to go thirty-seven years or some.
Thirty is the maximum.
Yeah. So I have to assume that Fleese isn't gonna hire you for the next thirty years to manage, you know, see what I'm saying? What happens? So that you just hire a new person who's an expert and they can jump right into this particular plan and take off with it?
Or is it something the Brownfield does? Like, are we doing it this way right now just because we're brand new?
I see what you're saying. Um. I don't know many communities that have their own in-house Brownfield individual. Um. The only one that I'm aware of is Detroit's Grand Rapids and those folks are wearing dual hats too. Um, it's something that we at F and D work with and see on a daily basis. We work hand in hand with your treasurer, with your assessor as we're doing these um, verifications and, you know. They'll have, we'll be matching out spreadsheets to each other. Um, but really it's something that we do for you. It's. We have our own struggles finding Brownfield experts to join our team. I can only imagine what that search looks like at the local government level. And they do come from local government experience. I was in two communities over my lifetime. So working with municipalities is where, you know. I do my best work. I don't do much on the private development side. Um, working with municipalities is my love and passion.
So when you leave, Fleese will have to provide another person with your expertise.
Correct.
Take over our plan.
Yes.
But there's a, there's a services agreement that we must have with you. Over that we renew what every.
Well, you're talking about the main, the big one.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying like.
Well, we have the Fleese agreement.
No, but but.
And your administrative capture that you captured through the B R A goes to cover those types of things too.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I promise you, before I I leave or before I kind of shuffle up throughout the organization, you will know exactly. Who you're dealing with and I will leave you in good hands.
Retire too, so.
Right, I'm saying, why am I retiring? I think he's retiring before me.
It's important to small towns to know.
Oh, absolutely.
That's how we got you.
Right, right. And that that's extremely important to me too. Like, for example. Next Monday, I've got competing council meetings and this is your first one. So I I am here. And I've got other staff that I've been in this community that I've been working with for years. So I can slowly start doing that handoff. But I like being up here. She doesn't like being at those meetings as much. It takes time. You gotta get used to it, right?
So have you done a a tip at the Holland? Were you actively involved with it?
Yes.
You came from Holland? Okay, so there's lots of tips.
Yeah, lots of tips.
Yeah, there's a lot going on in Holland. Some very intricate plans over there. You never know, you may. You might.
Another beautiful property.
You got it.
So just real quickly, the reimbursement agreement was like I mentioned, what lays out who's going to be repaid, all the terms and conditions. I list out parties involved because we don't know what each plan may hold. There may be an instance down the road where. The city may be conducting some of the eligible work on that site. And wants to be party to that reimbursement. And so their party to that TIF plan. Um, goes over the tax increment financing provisions, what the administrative capture is going to look like. Any sort of assignment or transfer. Typically in the reimbursement agreement, we do allow transfer to. An entity with the same, you know, affiliates. However, if that was going to be a business transaction and sold to somebody new or the TIF was going to be assigned to a new entity. That would have to come back before the B R A for approval. Um, I've seen it happen once in my career where the TIF was transferred. It's a very unique situation. Um, more often than not, that doesn't happen unless it's a, you know, negotiated business point that they're going to sell it to. This person for a higher price because they're going to have a revenue stream down the road.
Samantha, what's your opinion on whether? The city of Big Rapids needs to hire a ex TIF expert to watch over it things. We've had two different opinions on that.
Are you talking about like onsite oversight of the eligible activities or?
Like an auditor? Is that what you're saying?
There's a lot of legal mumbo jumbo in this whole thing and. Brad's group feels that we should probably have somebody at his firm looking at these things. And others say you don't really need to do that. And we've never done this. So I, what's your thought?
I always try and go for a hybrid approach. Um, you know, I've got template language. I'm sure Brad's seen this template language. And, you know, sometimes I'll draft it. I always want the reimbursement agreement coming from the municipality first, not taking a developer's reimbursement agreement. Um, it would be great if we could have almost like templated reimbursement agree agreement language. That is our first point of negotiation. On any Brownfield plan. So then, you know, yours, as more plans are approved, you know what to expect in these agreements. And really only like little changes should be happening. Like how many units? What's the affordability period? So hybrid approach is how I would do it.
We presume that when we get to that stage that we'll communicate and share and go over the same agreement to make sure that.
So that stage isn't next week?
No.
Okay.
No, that's, that's after. This is approved but before and it's the state approval process.
Now, the one time when Trevor didn't make the meeting, you, one of your colleagues.
Mark Nettleton, yep.
And that's one of his specialties is working with these kind of.
Correct, yeah. He does Brownfield work. So I'd bring him in and probably look at that agreement when they draft it.
Thank you.
Of course. Going back to each of the state entities that are involved. So the Brownfield plan is the local approval process. Now that, like I mentioned, that goes for all of the city and all of the county mills. After the Brownfield plan is approved and after the reimbursement agreement is executed. The development team prepares an Act three eighty-one work plan and that gets sent to. One or more of the state agencies involved in this approval process. That authorizes the use of the state education tax and the school operating tax for reimbursement. Uh, we handle that administratively. So with Eagle, it is a letter that transmits the plan from the B R A. To Eagle and then they have sixty days to review. Uh, the Act three eighty-one work plan cannot exceed an amount that was approved in the Brownfield plan. So the with three one work plan will never exceed what is in the Brownfield plan. Some other things that we also can look to do in the reimbursement agreement is if. We have a developer that we don't believe may go to the state of Michigan to seek approval and that's something that we want to see. We would look at what is the proportional share of state tax capture as compared to local tax capture? And in that reimbursement agreement, state that if the development team does not go to Mishda, Eagle, M E D C. To seek approval, it's not the locals' responsibility to pay, you know. Two million, say it's two million dollars total, but the local share is one. We would limit them to one million dollars. So you're never going to be responsible for more than the local proportional share. Just because a developer chooses to not seek state approval on a plan. This is difficult to see, but this is what an Eagle reply letter looks like. So it substantiates all right, what they've approved. And then what their proportional share is going to be. M E D C is a little bit different of a process for incentives over a million dollars. Those require approval by the Michigan Strategic Fund. So that is working in partnership with your um, community assistance team. Individual at M E D C figuring out, making sure that the development team's got everything that they need into M E D C and then getting placed on an agenda. Again, that is an administrative transfer, transmittal of the work plan. And then um, they send us the resolution for, of support for that project. And then Mishda operates similar to Eagle. All of these will be transmitted. They have a sixty day statutory review period. And they will go and they'll issue a reply letter that is similar to Eagle or they will conditionally approve the plan. And then again, just the reimbursement process, they're going to submit the, as in the development team is going to submit a reimbursement package. To the B R A that may be one submittal with all of their activities. If we're doing an extremely large project, that may be multiple submittals. Say when they're done with demolition, they submit to reimbursement request. Right? And they're done with site prep, then they submit one. Um, and then for housing projects, as I mentioned, we'll have an annual uh, request for that gap financing. So we review those and we make a recommendation to the B R A to certify a certain amount. And then once that is approved by the B R A, the developer is paid only the available increment. And then, like I mentioned, that proportion, if there's no approved Act three eighty-one work plan.
Samantha, is there controversy on a given year where the developer says, no, I should get two hundred thousand? And you figured out it was one fifty and then there's a controversy or that never happens?
That rarely happens. Um, the only instance where that has happened is that. This was caught through Eagle audit. So the M E D C portal reporting reviews what has been captured. And we reached the maximum amount of allowable state capture. And so we withheld funding from the developer and the amount that we had an overage because we had to repay the state. But I've never had somebody come and say, you know, we believe it should be this. Um, only had to limit reimbursement when we had a situation where we over capture and needed to reimburse the state. Of course. So again, just to recap, the Brownfield plan authorizes all of the local villages. Final approval, oh, this is county, sorry. We're, the city board of commissioners is where that final approval lies. And Act three eighty-one work plan, that is after Brownfield plan approval and the execution of the reimbursement agreement. And that is for the mills that the state has jurisdiction over. And then the reimbursement process is really trust but verify. The Brownfield plan is our best guess at a future reality. And so that's why we. The brownfield plan is our best guess at a future reality, and so that's why we go through all the invoices. That's why we're looking at what's the actual taxable value of that property is on an annual basis. And also, the millage rates will change. We have Headley that reduces our millage rate, so those are going to adjust on an annual basis. So make sure we land where we want to land, or if we aren't, we'll communicate that to the city and the B R A. And then ongoing compliance through the MEDC reporting portal. I think I took up more than twenty minutes, I'm sorry.
Fine.
Any questions? Did I thoroughly confuse everyone? Hopefully it wasn't too bad.
Um, my only question has to do with the authority of the brownfield development, that they can make and enter contracts, they can own mortgage, convey lease, rent land and property, they can accept grants and donations, they can invest money, and they can do all of that without the city commission's approval. Is that standard, or are there some places that write into the brownfield authorities?
I have not seen it written into bylaws or anything like that. That comes right out of statute, similar to, like, the D D A has those same powers.
Okay.
We rarely see it happen. I know many, I know tax increment finance authorities like TIFAs or DDAs kind of get more involved in that land acquisition piece, uh, than brownfield redevelopment authorities, but it can't happen.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, you have a community where you have a complete disconnect between the governing body and the brownfield authority, so. It's just weird.
Approve each plan.
Absolutely.
We still get mixed the whole plan.
Yeah, so even if there were to be an Eagle grant.
Makes me uneasy, that's all, just.
Even if there were to be like an Eagle grant that would be required to be put into a brownfield plan, so it would still come before this body for final approval.
Mayor, I have a question, if that's okay.
Um, so you talked about thirty-two housing developments that you're working on. Have you seen these, uh, um, just so everybody's, for everybody's benefit, we have to notify all taxing jurisdictions as part of this process because, uh, as part of the capture, it's capturing other jurisdictions' millages. And have you seen or been witness to other jurisdictions coming and arguing, saying, please don't do this, or why are you doing this? Have you seen that, or has it not been that way in your per- your experience?
I have not had that happen once in my career on the brownfield side.
Before you develop, they're getting zero.
No, I, I just wanted, I had to.
That's true.
They're getting very minimal on that land. You put a few houses on there and then money starts generating.
Well, and maybe it's unique to Big Rapids, because it turns out, I think, some things are, but the, uh, when we used to do, um, oh, industrial tax exemptions, we would almost, well, not every time, or not, uh, not, not, uh, routinely, we would get um, the M O I S D complaining about issuing the tax exemptions. Oh, that's where that common question comes from. I don't know if, why they would care, because from an M O I S D standpoint, you know, more housing, more students, more families, I think that's all.
Actually generates more for the schools, or how about curfew funding?
Yeah.
One thing to watch that I have seen, and probably rare, I don't know if you've seen, is making sure that if you're collecting the money as the city, that the appropriate amounts to the other jurisdictions are getting to the other jurisdictions. We've seen it where sometimes the municipality forgets to give the, that money.
Value too.
And they just keep it all for themselves and then realize it ten years later or something like that, and that's not a good, good situation.
Treasurer like we have.
It's harder to give money back, right? You don't wanna over-capture.
Right.
One thing that's, um, this is great information, Sam, nice, nice work. Uh, one thing that's, uh, specific to this proposal is a contribution from the city as a part of the project of a million dollars. So that, that will be in the information that you see. Now, it started as a request of two million dollars, and the mayor, uh, single-handedly got that down. I would credit him for that. So, um, this is for infrastructure improvement, and this is, as they describe it, uh, uh, the city taking a share of the risk in the project. That's, um, you know, they wanted more units, they wanted, I think, seventy-five. Yeah, and we have fifty-four. Um, so, you know, we're working on an agreement with them, which I don't, you know, I, I get a little lost in which agreements are what, but we're gonna have to have some level of an agreement with them on how that money is paid, if that's what the commission chooses to do. Uh, how it's paid, when it's paid, and who it's paid, yeah, how it's used.
We can capture that million on the TIF.
Correct.
Very.
And we have.
We give that money back.
Yeah, and we do have that.
Because, well, but really, it's, it's a million dollars we're putting into the infrastructure, right? Like, so it's not us writing a check for a million dollars, it's us.
Oh.
Paving streets and putting like.
Isn't, isn't that what that?
Well, I think that's yet to be determined, but, but I mean, if they hire a paving contractor, we're not gonna hire our own paving contractor to do the last four hundred feet of the road kind of thing. I, I, you know, I, we haven't nailed all that down, that's a good question.
Okay, yeah, cuz.
We haven't nailed all that down yet.
Like, cutting someone a check for a million dollars is more of a difficult conversation than us doing our infrastructure extension, so.
But over time, that money comes back. Is TIF?
Yes, it does.
It does, it's just.
It takes a long, long time. We opted to do it sooner than later.
No, we shifted it towards the end because it ended up being a thirty-year repayment schedule when you were being repaid proportionally. And so that's when we decided to keep the five percent in the admin, five percent in L B R F, and have the city wait until the end, because it, it ended up being lower interest if the city waited till the end. If we drew the plan out further with the city being repaid proportionally, it, it was a worse position in interest payment to the developer that way.
One, one of the eligible, see, this is getting into the nitty-gritty of what you're gonna see. One of the eligible costs that they can recoup is interest on their investment. And, uh, and it's a sizable number. I don't remember what the number is, but it's big. And if we were to try to recapture our million dollars upfront, that pushes their exposure, if you will, of the money they're trying to get out longer, and so they, they collect more interest.
Yeah, they, yeah.
That's what.
Got it.
Yep.
That's what Sam's talking about. So this is all, it's all a real kind of a fine negotiation to get to where we're at. But, um, um, I just wanted to point that out so it was very clear to you as, as you're reviewing it, that that is an expectation of this plan. Uh, is a contribution from the city. How and when it comes is something we need to work on. Have you seen that, Sam? I'm sorry, mayor, if I, please. Have you seen, have other, uh, uh, communities, um, had those, the municipal contributions?
Yes.
And, uh, a- and so this idea about what we're paying for and when we're paying, that's, you're gonna help us craft all that.
Yes.
Right, that, and that's not part of what we're approving on, or what we may be approving next week.
Correct, only the brownfield place that, piece that does get you reimbursed, that million dollars. I foresee kind of the reimbursement agreement being separate from, like, this would be a development agreement or some, something like that for the infrastructure piece. I had plans that have a county, like, county admin, county B R A, county local brownfield revolving fund, a city and two developers, all party to one reimbursement agreement, because, yeah, it can get as tricky as we want it to.
Yeah.
When do they typically enter into the development agreement? Is that typically at the same time as the reimbursement agreement?
Uh, usually I see that kind of around when the site plan is done, yeah, so.
Todd, any questions? Anyone?
Wendy? So you mentioned the county a couple times, so is the county commission gonna have to approve?
No, the final approval resides with the city board of commissioners.
And it, and then you said the county has to be informed?
The county was notified through the public notice, yes.
Okay, that's the, they don't have to.
Correct, yeah, because public hearing notices have to be published at least ten days prior to the public hearing, but there's.
So if they come to the public hearing, county officials and voice something against it, then you'd have to respond to that?
We'd have to.
They would, but.
Right, we would respond to it, however, under brownfield, like with a D D A, taxing jurisdictions can choose to opt out. A taxing jurisdiction cannot choose to opt out of a brownfield plan. Um, there's been situations where we've looked at doing a pass-through, but like, where the, each taxing jurisdiction gets twenty percent of the growth, the developer gets eighty. Again, that just draws out the repayment period of a plan. Um, and that provision has to be applied to all of the millages equally.
Well, you're talk, what you're talking about is just the equalization would have to be informed.
Correct, yes.
Mark, have you talked to any, like, the school system, et cetera?
I, I haven't. I'm happy to make some phone calls, I have not.
Just eventually, right? Out of courtesy.
They were, yeah, they would have been informed through the public hearing, it was mailed directly to them.
Is what they, is what they received.
Yep.
Thank you, Samantha.
You're so welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from the group? Veterans Parade tomorrow, Veterans Parade at eleven.
Uh, I was gonna say Ferris has a free veterans', uh, breakfast at, I believe it's at the University Center. It's from seven thirty to nine tomorrow. And then, of course, there's the parade at eleven. It's the, what is it, the fiftieth anniversary of the wreck of the Edmund Fitzgerald? That's today. Does anybody wanna hear the song?
You're a graduate of college when I went down. Anybody else?